Gina on or no?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, we'll just go ahead and get started, yeah. Okay. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, March 29th, 2022. We are convened as the Provo City School District Board of Education. The time is approximately 7:30 a.m. We are meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. And we will begin with the rule call. Melanie Hall, Board President.
Rebecca Wilson, Board Vice President.
Jennifer Partridge, Board Member.
McKay Johnson, Board Member.
Terry McKay, Board Member.
Nate Price, Board Member.
Derek Anderson, Business Administrator.
Keith Rattell, Superintendent.
Is there a motion to convene?
I know that we convene in study session.
We are now in our study session. All right, we're going to begin this morning with some more board training. Just for the public to be aware, the board will be going over parts of the handbook on a monthly basis, and we're going to review different sections of it and discuss why they're important. So today I want to discuss on page five, bullet points four, five, and six, if you want to pull those up. Okay, the first bullet point is endeavor to be on time and attend all board meetings, having prepared ahead of time by carefully studying posted board packets. During board meetings, listen to all information and viewpoints, and refrain from using personal electronic devices for personal business. So we were all voted in as representatives to do this job. It's much easier to do this job in person and have those conversations in person. However, I do know there are times that you're not going to be able to attend, and we can assist with setting up Zoom. I've had to do this even for work when I've been out of town, been able to set up and be part of the meeting afterwards, or during the meeting, but not in person. Try to time your vacations around the meeting dates, and I understand that there are times when you're not going to be available to come. Also, please make sure you look it over everything that's posted on Board Docs. We're trying to be more aware of posting those in a timely manner so that you can see those. Oh, I think we have Gina coming on. Yeah. Gina, are you there?
Gina Howells entered the meeting at 7:30.
And the video's not working, Gina, just so you're aware. It'll work on us. Anyway, with the things that are posted in Board Docs, I think if you have any questions, it's always best to email the person who submitted it prior to the meeting so that they can have the answers for you when you bring the questions to the meeting. I believe that this is very helpful, and it also makes it more transparent for the public that they can see the answers, because a lot of times we might be asking a question that we may not be able to answer in the meeting. And then the public may not see that answer later, because they have to get back to you. So my question, or so thoughts on bullet point number four?
I think you did a good job.
Okay. So, okay.
I don't want to incriminate myself on any of these.
Well, I know.
So I'm going to keep my mouth shut.
Just be aware that...
Sometimes the Janas are playing during... Not that I would ever look, but sometimes it comes up on a walk.
McKay, you know, with the personal electronics thing, isn't there something that we're not supposed to be?
You're not, I mean, so if it's, if there is a... So it is part of the open meeting law that you cannot text a fellow board member during a meeting. And so if it looks like you might be texting, someone might, you know, inquire, and that doesn't mean that they'll give the personal text, because it will probably go to the officer, which will likely be, Derek will review your phone to say, "No, that wasn't to a board member." But if it is to a board member, that is a violation of the open meeting law. Oddly, you can stand up and go and whisper in their ear, because people can see you doing that, but...
That's more secretive.
Uh-huh, yeah, so...
Okay. All right, bullet point number five, guard the public trust by spending district school funds to benefit all children. So we're responsible for the annual budget every year. We also review the CAFR. Remind me what CAFR stands for?
Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which the acronym is going away to just AcFer. Apparently, there's in South America, the word CAFR is an offensive term, and so...
And in South Africa.
What was that?
And in South Africa.
Yeah, that's... Did I say South America or South Africa?
South Africa.
Oh, South Africa, yes.
It's very offensive.
Okay, I don't need to know, but you go there, but, okay.
Tell me later.
Anyway, we need to make sure that the money we receive from the taxpayers is spent in a positive way. I really appreciate it when we ask questions about new positions, or where the money's coming from, asking about, you know, looking for, are we being wasteful in any ways? Are we making sure the money is being spent equally around the district? We need to look closely at the consent calendar and ask questions, again, prior to the meeting is helpful, so they can have the answers ready. Thoughts?
That also just made me think like to not have pit projects that just benefit new students, but how do we maximize helping everybody?
I think, like, the advantage of the annual financial reports is actually, I mean, two things. I mean, all of, all the districts do them, so you can, you have that good comparison. That's where the auditors and the project kits data basically comes, a lot of that comes from those annual reports. So they're long for a reason, but in looking through them, I think that they're very, very helpful. That responsibility of where money goes, I think it's important to understand also the strings that go with that, so that we're effective, because in, when we say we don't have money for certain things or that things, it's not because, it's not even our priority. It's because, you know, those things are siloed, you know, the money is siloed, isn't anything else. And with, there is the new legislation of, you know, this regulatory sandbox from Lincoln College Board, but I don't know how that actually works in a, in a district, because certainly every group, you know, special ed parents know that that money is coming to them. And, and I think the only problems that, historically, maybe, you know, even long before Superintendent Rattell showed up, was probably where some of those silos were not, that was where the district was really in danger, because some of the silos were violated egregiously.
Any other thoughts on bullet point number five? Okay. Bullet point number six, understand the distinctions between the board and staff roles, and refrain from performing management functions that are the responsibility of the superintendent, the business administrator, and the staff. So there is, it's very important to remember that the board has two employees, the superintendent and the business administrator. We are not to direct any other member of staff. When we reach out to other members of the district, we must include either Derek or Keith in the email exchange, or ask if it would be all right to contact them or set up a meeting with them. Both the superintendent and the VA need to know what our conversations are being had with their employees. We are board members, we are not the CEO or the CFO of this organization. It is important to let them know you are having conversations with the principals of the schools you might be over as well. I also think it's important that if you contact, you can have conversations with teachers, but I don't know, I personally don't think we should be sending out an email to all the teachers without Keith or Derek knowing. Thoughts?
I really like this part, because, I mean, what, we get paid 150 bucks, somewhere around there, and I spend a couple hours a month in this district. And, I mean, I wish I could do more, but I'm not an employee, I don't see what's going on every day, so I don't, I never feel like I have enough information to be the director. Because I've been, I've been the CEO of, you know, not like Keith, I had like 40 employees, and you're there every day, you're working with these people, so it's a totally different perspective from a board member. And, and sometimes I think it's hard, because people in the community think that we are the boss, so they're like, "We'll get this done," and I have to tell them...
That's not our responsibility.
Yeah, that's not, that's not my job, I can pay 450 bucks. My job's just, I'm just, I feel like I'm the gristle in between, well, like, in between the community and the school district. And I have to relay to the community what the district's doing, and I have to relay to the school district what the community wants. And it's, it's a thankless job, because you're always getting pounded between the two, but it's, it gives me sanity, because then I don't feel like it's my job, and I don't let Keith off his firearm, so, right? Right, I mean, that's...
You'll fire him with the consent of the board.
With the consent of the board, which gets to the next thing. But if, if there's an issue, then we just take it to Keith, right? And so, and hopefully, some people wouldn't get Keith to do something. So I, I really appreciate this, but I think it's the hardest thing for a board member to do.
Can I add to that? I think you're very right, Nate, and especially with the discussion we'll have later about kind of, we're trying to rein in our committee assignments, is we don't need more to do for, by any means. But also to add to that, I don't think there's any harm in trying to be informed on what does happen, and so I don't think there's harm in attending certain meetings, or, you know, but, but that's not, but, but it's not by any means our place to walk into any meeting we want, or to, you know, make ourselves, you know, we, we should be letting people know we're coming to meetings, and we, and, and asking if it's okay if we're there. You know, like, we, we don't get to invite ourselves to whatever the heck we want. We need to be very aware of how a board member walking into a meeting totally changes things. People don't say the same things they would say if we weren't there. So we gotta, we gotta be very respectful of people's job duties, what they were hired to do. We hired them to do certain things, because we believed in them, and we want them to do that job, so we certainly don't need to take that from them. And we need to be respectful of that, and be respectful of their time, and what they sometimes will want to say freely without us there. So I think it's good to, to be involved enough, to be informed about what's happening, but not make ourselves some kind of authority while we're there, so that people feel funny about it. I don't know, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, as I, there's a, with principals, just to add a little bit of oomph to what Rebecca just said, principals do frequently, when I talk to them, go out and visit to them in their offices, wander around the schools with them, they will say, when a board member shows up, it's a good thing usually, but everybody wants to kind of defer to the board Your presence in a meeting does change, sometimes can change the tone of that meeting. And so it's just, just to be aware of that. And, you know, we also know that one board member does not have a lot of authority, it's, it's the collective. So, you know, that's one, maybe one of the other reasons why you want to let people know if you're showing up, because if three other people, three other board members show up, then somebody starts to say, "Okay, so is this a public meeting? What's going on here?" So it's just, it helps people manage the situation.
I think it's, it's good when, so understanding this role, sort of as Nate said, this republic thing, so I think that, that when there is a PTA meeting, and, you know, you have been a parent, or you are a parent, or these are your neighbors, and it's not exactly the school's meeting either, it's a community meeting. I don't know if you need to, I mean, it's nice if you let people know, but if you see it on your calendar and you go, "Oh, I forgot about that," and you want to show up, great.
But we also have to remind ourselves that we're not part of their agenda either.
That's right, yeah. We're always there to, you know, "Why are you here? Do you want time? I'm here to listen, I mean, I'll do, I'll answer, you know, I'll take any questions you have, but I'm here to gather information, I'm here to listen." Same in community council. I think it's a, I think it's a, when I, my, our interest, when I first put it in application to be on the board, because I worked in the school district, I had a really dysfunctional board, and I was a middle manager in that, that board, in that district, and it caused havoc, and I, my kids were at school, and I didn't want to do that, and so maybe I came in with a different, but I have not, so I've been on the board nine years, and I've been to a single faculty meeting. And I think I've been to, I think I've been to one principal's meeting by invitation over nine years. But anything that is, like, sort of the school's meetings, has not had sort of a direct community connection, I mean, it can't be anything besides community council. That doesn't mean that, you know, especially when my kids were in school, and I came to get them, the principal asked, "Hey," and I stood outside their office, or, or, or I've been to an event, and I talked with the principal, and, but it's been, you know, rarely, it is, it's rarely delved into, like, sort of policy, it's been what's going on, and it's been, you know, questions. But I think that's, that's just really helpful. Almost all the problems that, it can, it can just create enormous problems, when, because promises are implied, whether you think they are or not, they're implied that we can agree with them, even when you nod your head like, "Yeah, no, this is how this should be," that there is an expectation that's what's going to show up.
You know, one principal said to me, when a board member shows up and just says, "Here, I'm here as a parent, I'm not here as a board member." I don't know that you can ever really divorce yourself from the idea of being a board member, but it, it really kind of lets a little pressure off the principal at that particular moment, because there, I think when a board member shows up, they kind of feel like, "I've got to perform, I've got to be on my toes," and yet, when somebody shows up as a parent, it's a little bit less formal. So I also wanted to add, probably unlike most people in this room, I've actually worked in a number of districts. I used to work for a superintendent who insisted that he knew absolutely every conversation that a board member had with me, or I had with a board member. I don't feel that strongly. Every principal in this district I've hired, and I feel a tremendous amount of loyalty to and from them. If there's an issue going on, they will talk to me about it, and so, but, but I think it is good practice. I don't know that future superintendents would feel that way, so I think that, and I know that in other districts, they don't feel that way. So it probably is just a matter of good practice to, to let somebody know if you're having a conversation of some kind with, hey, I mean, if this does, if it's informal about setting up a kindness event, I don't need to know about those things. But if you're talking about any of the functioning of the school, or, you know, you want to get a read on this or that, it's not a bad idea, because no more than you would like to be surprised, I don't really like to be surprised.
Well, I was just going to add to that, and then it helps you know what our questions are, or concerns, and things like that, and since you administer over the whole district, it's good for you to, to know what people are wanting to know or concerned about.
I'm generally not a paranoid person, so I'm not that worried about it, but, but as a matter of order, it's not a bad idea.
I also just wanted to add, I think we have a great size of our school district. I think there's a lot of advantages that we can get to know our schools and things better, but if you think about, so many other districts are larger than we are, and logistically, they can't be in all their schools, and, and doing some of these things that, that we might be concerned about. So I think if we see it, kind of, that we need to be at that little higher level with policy, and we want to get a feel for what's going on, and where maybe we can make improvements, but, but we're not, can't have a hand in all of our schools, that's the job of the administrators, and let's let them do their job, that's why we hired them.
Marty Schaefer was a board member in my previous district. He used to talk regularly about, "Let's not get into the weeds," the weeds being my work and the work of the staff here in the district. And it was, it was always a good reminder, just about the separation, that's all. Now, in all honesty, in my 10 years I've been here, we haven't had much of that problem at all. So, I mean, I, I think this board has traditionally had a good sense of how to separate roles, so that's, that's commendable to you folks.
There's also a difference when I go to just drop off treats for teacher appreciation and stick it in the faculty room. I usually just tell the principal, "Huh, spread the word, there's treats in there," and then I leave, you know?
Yeah, that's true.
Nate, did you have something to add?
No.
Anything else you guys want to add to this? Well, thank you, and we'll have, we'll probably be doing it again in April during the April board meeting, just because there's only one board meeting in April, so even though it's not a morning session. So, okay. Moving on to our second part is committee assignments. This is a follow-up to what we discussed in the retreat in February. There was concern about kind of, we want to be aware of everybody's time. So this was not to necessarily bring more assignments to people, but to look at what, maybe we can pare down, what's important, why are we on these certain assignments and such? So I want to have that conversation today. We posted, I put together this list of what I believe is the most accurate as of right now, what, as far as committee assignments we have going on in the school district. So just if you want to, if we want to just go down the rows, row by row, and we can discuss each one, and if it's how we may want to either scale it back, or do we need to have two board members? Why do we have two board members? How often do they meet?
If a committee even needs to exist?
Yeah.
Because the adult ed one that I'm supposedly on, I emailed the director of the adult ed, and she's like, "I don't know what you're talking about." Apparently, this doesn't actually exist.
Okay.
I've never been contacted about this.
So...
It might not, I mean, maybe it existed and served its purpose, and now it doesn't need to exist anymore.
All right, so we talked about adult ed, and wondering, do you know the history behind that one, Keith, adult ed?
No, no idea. I'm guessing it was just an attempt to make sure that every program has some type of representation of it.
There was, adult ed is often funded by various grants, and those grants require a board member that grant has been changed, and that simplified, it being simplified, and then just inertia going forward. I'm sure that that's where it started initially, just like TSSA. So some of these are, you know, statutory, the audit committee is statutory with TSSA, so it's, you know, some, this is, but this is how this will go. But, but they come and go, so the rules change. You know, they're supposed to have a grant application, and now that's been simplified, so...
Okay, so is that one we could take off the table, adult ed?
Unless they decide they want some kind of representation, but otherwise, right?
Yeah, let us follow up on that, just to confirm it, but, yeah, that's the direction.
When I was looking at all the different board committees, Park City had a really good definitions of what the different kinds of committees are, you know, there's the different levels of, "This is required by state law, we have to have these committees." Here's ad hoc committees, and here's different kinds, and different levels of committees. So if you want, feel free to go with that, if you want to do it.
Actually, Gina mentioned to suggest that in her email that she sent early this morning, that each committee ought to have some kind of definition and time, and, and time constraint. And I think that's a great idea, I like that, the handbook. Yeah, do that.
I think overall, I think it's important to remember that almost all the committees sort of go with the interests of the board. And that might just be in supporting the interest of, so the board can be interested in the interest of an individual board member, too.
Right.
But it, it goes with the interests, so I think that the Policy Review Committee, for example, in many districts, often that's, often that, in, in medium to smaller districts, often that's handled by our administration, like it has been here for the most part, because people go, you know, "This isn't operational, we, we need more guidance." In other places, there are, there are so many eyes constantly. I mean, when you have a larger population, and you just impact more kids, and you go, "Where does this happen?" Having that come up often is just helpful. The same with the government operations, that sounds like you're lobbying the legislature, that, for the most part, is real estate. I mean, when we think about, we think about, you know, our community councils and our crosswalks, if you have 11 municipalities in your district, and you're just buying real estate constantly, and we've got one, one agreement that's been on our agenda for, I don't know, five meetings now, six meetings, if there's constantly doing this, I mean, it's just, it gets, it's, it's a lot, and so that's why, so, so I think it's good to see, to see what you can be interested in, but, and what maybe you're not paying attention to, but I think it's also good to recognize that, one, if you expand that, you're, you're not just expanding the work of the board, you're actually expanding the management costs of the district, because every committee that is stood up has to have staff support. Staff support means time, that means personnel, that means pressure to bring in managers, that means that, that you're expanding that, that administrative cost, when people go, "Why are you spending so much money in the district office and not in the classroom?" Because we ask for information, and I'm interested in this. And so those, especially in a, in a medium-sized district, we want to keep administrative costs, it's not just our time, we need to look at what, what we're doing. I think it's, I also think it's with our size of district, more than, yes, we, we can innovate, but we have to be selective, and then aside from that, we have to do what really other great companies do, and that is, we have to have good relationships with USBA, with our neighboring districts, and just steal from them. What did they figure out, and just do it. And, and sometimes that can eliminate sort of a committee as well.
Maybe we need to have a list of what's required, what committees are absolutely required by state law, and what are ones that are just those previous boards have wanted. I'm sure Audit Committee and the SEC Fed Committee, those are probably required, right?
Yep, yes, they are.
Sounds like we just need to have some more detailed spreadsheet, right?
Yeah. Okay, well, let's continue down and just go from, and see what we can whittle down or what's not. USBA Legislative Representatives, that's Jennifer, she's elected to that, isn't that the two years?
So that's part of being on the Board of Directors. I'm on the Board of Directors now.
Board of Directors.
So McKay was.
So those two can be combined, and...
Yep.
Okay, you get yourself a break.
Well...
So that's, that was, I just, I just wanted to make sure... So that was, I just wanted to make sure, because I knew that you were still part of, like, you still helped out with the JLC and legislative sessions and stuff.
Sure, yeah, but it's more, I can't find one.
Get paid a lot for it. All right, next, City PTA Representative. Currently, we have two on there, and Gina made a really good point about this one. Keith attends that meeting, Jennifer attends that meeting, and I used to attend that meeting prior to being on the COVID Safety Committee meeting. I think it's a little redundant to have two board members on that committee.
So I think some of it just has to do with the history of it. When I first came on the board, there were a lot of board members who were former PTA presidents and things like that. And they're like, "Hey, I want to be..."
Interest, there was, yeah, interest.
So we had two, I think it was you and Julie, and I was the alternate, in case, you know?
Yeah.
But even with having two, I don't think we have to feel like we both have to go, but it's, I don't know. I think with anything, we need to weigh, like, is there a reason why we would need to have two eyes on something? Or not? I don't know, that's a city-wide kind of thing. Would it be good to have more than one board member connected with them just for representation? And us understanding what the concerns are?
Parents.
Or is one sufficient? I don't know.
So the time for this is usually monthly, at 9:30 on Tuesday mornings. Usually it's the same morning as the board meeting.
They have to, too, because they have their executive committee.
That's right, they have the executive one as well.
And then they have the...
So it's twice a month. My, having served on this one, I personally feel one board member is sufficient.
I think, I certainly like, so a board member should be there, does that make sense? I do think it's helpful. I think that that is one place where being explicit in how boards work, meaning that no one board member has power, sometimes that, just that symbolic thing. Yeah, "We're here." There's, this is not just an individual opinion, or that the board needs to be interested. I think that that's helpful. Does that make sense? I wouldn't discourage, I don't think more than one is required, but I wouldn't discourage two. If there was one, I think that that is one that I would probably volunteer for again, if it was just one. I used to be on that one.
So we can always say, you know, Johnny is the member, and anyone else who wants to, is welcome to come with the proper notice.
Yeah.
Or do we want, like, an alternate?
Or these are the two, to, you know, so it's always clear to, I mean, that's a very active group, and sometimes they really want things. And sometimes it's nice, you know, for them to feel like, oh, they're heard, and it's nice, you know, for them to also see, oh, this isn't an automatic, and you're just going to lean on this one board member.
And if there are two who want to do it, then...
Yeah, but I don't think two is required.
But if only one shows up to the meeting because of schedule, that's totally fine.
Yeah.
Is Gina...
Gina's already saying she kind of needs to come up on that one anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm okay...
Gina, are you ready? Are you able to talk to us right now?
No.
She's watching on YouTube.
Oh, watching?
Her laptop's not working.
Okay.
Well, I'm fine, if we leave Jennifer right for right now. Like I said, these are, we're going to reevaluate these committees in January, or, I don't know. Gina had also mentioned...
Gina really wants to do it in June.
If we did these again in June, so that we're over it for the whole school year, which makes a little bit more sense. I think we did it in January, because that's when the new board members came on.
Yeah. So that's typically when other boards do their committee assignments.
It's in January, too?
Yeah, or February.
But we can re, we're going to be reevaluating school assignments and things in June as well. We can bring this back again in June, with, once we whittle this down a little bit more.
If there's any adjustments you want to make, now I don't feel like...
And I'm fine if we wanted to say, "Jennifer, you want to attend," and Gina can be the alternate until when she can...
Or she would be excused right now.
She could be excused right now, if that's what she would like. And if there's somebody, if you want to just reach out to somebody and just say, "Hey, I can't make it this week, is there somebody who would like to attend?"
Well, McKay expressed interest in it.
Do you want to be the alternate?
Sure.
Switch with Gina?
It's not, I mean, if, you know, especially if they can give the PTA folks, so that they're on the email for the meeting reminder, you know what I mean? Instead of having Bonnie do it all, to all of us all the time.
All right, I'll just switch that then, for right now. So, thank you. CAPS, so Rebecca and I have been on CAPS, and that's one where I think we needed two at the beginning, because this was something we were bringing both the East Side and the West Side together at the time. Now that the program is up and going, I don't think we need two board members on this committee.
It's all yours, Melanie.
I will take it.
Have at it.
Melanie's on every board, on every board.
She's, she's awesome. And I will let her have all the fun and awesomeness.
So McKay, you're on the Mountain Land Applied Technology Center board, is that...
That, I mean, so that is in statute, and so, and I'm currently the chair, so...
Does the statute think, do they have other board members from other...
So that has to be actually confirmed by the governor.
But is it a board, a school board member, do you think?
Yes, a school board is assigned, and it's term limited. So, and I, and I'll be, so, that, that's one that, they, they'll want someone who will be there, and then will be there again. So I'll, I think that my term will go another, if I'm reelected, it will go another two years. Yeah.
Wait, but is there a representative from all the boards, or just a board? Every district has a representative there?
It's covered in their service district, yes.
Okay.
So, so that board is, is 17 people because of that, because they have a board member from industry, and then each of the districts, and it's a statutory thing. So that is something that will need to be filled. But because of this new system of term limits, that's something that will...
And how often does that come up?
So it's two terms. So I was grandfathered, and then one, and then another. And so every eight years, basically, unless somebody gets unelected, because it has to be a representative from the school board. And they're now each, you know, governor appointees in industry, and then the school board ones have to be confirmed again by the governor's office. And they go, "Yeah, that's okay." And so it's sort of a process, and a strange thing. But, so I don't think that they'll want me to change in the middle, but I'm, but that's something that will come up again.
Can we go to you again? The National Affiliate Advocacy Network.
So that is something that, that sort of waxes and wanes as far as how much it shows up. I'm guessing that this is sort of a, you know, it hasn't, that's one thing that's sort of like gone away. Right now, almost all the national organizations are either lying low or scrambling to establish their existence, or create their existence. So that, that's, that's just, I mean, it's almost like they wanted to be USBA, and they just sort of faded away. And so in the last year, I think that they had, like, one call.
NSBA or USBA?
No, the National Affiliate Advocacy Network is just, is the same. It's almost, they, it's lobbying the federal government, mainly around special ed, or, or, you know, the Department of Education, keeping those things in line. I think they're, I mean, I don't even know if it will continue to exist. So we should check on that, and so... But at the same time, it might have a revitalization of the institution.
Are you okay to still stay on that right now?
Until we find out what it is, yeah.
That gives me a lot of word salad in the last little bit.
Next is the PEA Provo Education Association Provo Educational Support Professional Liaison Representative. Is this...
That's our liaison committee. We traditionally have had that to help us with negotiations. Over the, over the years, we meet twice a year. One time as kind of a state of the district in October, and then the second time, we actually meet today, this afternoon, and that'll be a budget report from Derek to the committee to talk about negotiations for this year.
And do you feel that two board members are helpful on that?
Helpful, yes. I don't know that it, that required, was required to. I think, you know, it could be one. Again, it only meets twice a year.
So I think on something like this, I think it's good to have two, two of us having eyes on that, showing that it's a board, where we want to have that relationship with the PEA and the Support Professionals Group, and, I don't know. I think sometimes when you're the only board member, I don't know, I'm not great at often emailing you guys, saying, "Oh, this is what's going on in this one committee I'm on." And I think something like this, if you've got another board member that you both have eyes on it, and then we can help each other remember if we need to communicate something bigger to the whole group.
And this isn't one that's going to be taking up a lot of time on a monthly basis?
Right.
And it's one of our most important parts.
Right, I agree. I agree. Okay, other boards just call this the Negotiation Committee?
It is a lot of words.
Well, if we just use our acronyms, way less than negotiation.
Nepasapakalos?
Okay, Community Council Advisor. I think one is sufficient for that. How often do you meet with, is that just like, once a year?
There's like one training meeting, and then it's just like a few emails back and forth with Alex, when like someone has an amendment that needs to be approved, or, and that's it.
And then you just reach out to us, to all the board members, when they'll come in, which they'll be doing at the end of...
Typically, yes, typically it's like, he'll say, "Do you feel like this needs to be brought to the entire board, or is it simple enough that you can just prove it?" And I'll say, "This looks simple enough." Or I'll say, "This needs to be taken to the whole board." And it'll all go either direction, that's it.
Safety Committee, that meets once a month. This is different from the COVID Safety Committee. And we meet once a month, the first Thursday of every month, at 10:00 AM. For about an hour, hour and a half. Do you want to say anything more about that committee?
Well, I'm just, sorry, I'm double-checking this adult ed committee.
Okay.
Looks like it doesn't need to exist. Tell me what the committee...
The Safety Committee, not COVID, the, the regular safety, yeah.
And it's one that is meant to try and steer the guide, the recommendations that we're doing. So there's certainly a lot of work that needs to be done there. One board member, it's helpful to have there to give insight, because it does impact the COVID quite a bit. When we talk about things such as visitor management systems, safety procedures, that are really, it's great to have that impact felt and spoken to by board members because your constituents will want to be aware of that.
And there were some other boards that had a specific traffic safety committee? But that's more community council.
More community council.
So I wasn't sure, you know, I don't know. It's not really safety, it is safety, but it's also responsibilities under community council, so...
I'd say we leave it to community councils.
I mean, because those plans have to be submitted by the community councils to change the paper. But that's where I would leave that there.
Yeah.
Well, and in effect, each of us is on, I mean, on that already anyways.
Well, if there are bigger concerns.
Then, yeah, if there's a bigger concern, you can send it my direction, and I can bring it forward.
Something like, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but people aren't being very nice, and hitting pedestrians and stuff in town. I don't know if we need to coordinate better with the city and, or the police department and encourage people to not be terrible drivers. You know, not too long ago, I was walking with Thomas in a stroller down Center Street, and I almost got hit by a big giant truck, and I was not happy, and, yeah.
Always a good reminder, so...
I, I think, like, a lot of the safety committees and some of the other, they're actually born, maybe even more out of, you know, crosswalks, they're out of like lights and new intersections and growing situations. I mean, I think of Marilyn Cofer that was on the ALM board, and tried to get a light at a specific intersection in her center, and ended up dying on that intersection.
She worked for like four years, didn't get a light, her son died, there was a light.
Are you kidding me?
Yeah, that's terrible. That's what happened right in front of the rec center.
Right. I think that, I mean, it's a worthy cause, but I wonder if, is it our cause? Is it a city cause? Is it...
I think, I think that, I mean, again, we have a, we have a limited number. We don't have a lot of new, you know, changing, I mean, there is going to be some new intersections or some new traffic as, as, you know, some of our agricultural area fills in eventually. But I think that handling it with, you know, Sergeant Orgill and our relationship with the city, and we've gone forward, I think we're covering that, just in a different, different way.
Yeah, let me add to that. I think the Safety Committee, it's a really big umbrella. It can cover just about anything. And the benefit is that Sergeant Orgill does attend those meetings, those monthly meetings. So if there is a city issue, he's able to help us work that through. I don't think that we try to limit what the broad definition of safety is in that particular. It's anything from, from security cameras to supervisory duties, hours of buildings being opened, I mean, it really is just about anything under the sun as it may pop up, because safety and security, especially for our students and staff, is one of the big priorities, right? You've got to have that as a foundational standard.
Okay, so I just, for time, I'm just going to move on. COVID Safety Committee, thankfully, that one's only meeting weekly now. But that one, that one ebbs and flows depending on how high we were and whatnot.
I know, I saw in the state, there were only eight kids in the whole state.
Hey, we were zero as of last week. We had one teacher, and so it's all on good, good trend right now. So I have a feeling that that one will probably go away, hopefully.
Don't say that out loud.
So Sex Ed, that's a must-have, right?
Yes.
If I can clarify, it's not required by the state code, I just looked it up. The committee is required, and it needs a certain balance of employees, and, but it doesn't specifically say a board member must be on that committee.
But again, this is also interest-based, and I served on it, and I know Gina showed interest, and I think it was really good for one of us to be on there.
It's great if you can, just want to provide the...
Just not wishful.
Okay, yeah.
And other boards weren't so blunt about the name of the committee. They were more like, Human Sexu, you know, Health Committee, or Human Sexuality.
Human Love?
We're just more upfront and blunt.
Yes.
We had one on Human Sexuality, and we finally decided to take the code from, I mean, the language from the code, which, like, education, I think is...
It's, it's one thing where it's become more vague with different layers of statute, where the board approves curriculum. This is an important piece of curriculum that we're going to have to approve anyway. It's nice that a board member is there to, because that committee is going to bring something to us, anyway.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, maybe, the scope is really so.
So narrow.
Confined that it's just outside groups, presenters or curriculum. And in five years of my doing on it, we've had one group come forward like that. So because we haven't established curriculum that the board accepted, um, that was developed by PTA, you know, county PTA councils and, but it, it is again, there's, they're required to see certain data each year and we get feedback on the programs. But, uh, it's an interesting, very legislatively dedicated committee.
But the data that's presented is always.
Oh.
Yeah.
You, you, I think that that's good data for the board to have a direct access to or a reason to have that data once a year.
Yeah.
Be welcome. I just wanted to provide the option if it.
For future. Yeah. Okay. Data advisors, I don't even know what this one does.
Does luck.
Is it still needed?
Gina agrees that one board member should be on that committee.
The data one? Or the, the sex ed?
Um, the, so the data privacy laws are always being revisited. And I don't, I don't know this, I don't know what the requirement is. I think, yeah, what that is again, I mean, that, that's something that's just going to come into professional practice. We don't have a transportation committee to make sure everybody has a CDL either. But.
So that we could at least have, at least just one board member on that.
Yeah.
Yeah?
It might be timing out though, because a lot of the bulk of the work was done already. We, they may not just, I'll check.
Yeah, I mean, it's just that data privacy, they changed, you know, for how long you keep student records and all that stuff. And they want, they're trying to make sure that these changes were implemented.
All right, audit committee, um, that one we meet once a year or twice a year maybe for follow-up.
It'll be normally twice a year. The one will be right before, like usually the audit report is, is issued. And the other one is usually in the fall if there's additional work on things that would need to, you know, kind of doing. And then this year, the reason there hasn't been any is because our auditor, our internal auditor, internal audit stuff is retired. That's what we're trying to find out. We're looking at, we've just actually been talking with UBU. And the professors there are excited about the potential of coming up with some kind of internal audit agreement where they will come in and use students at UBU and come in and do the internal audit function as part of the training thing and they would oversee it. So that work, that's kind of, we'll hang up on that one as well. But then the external audits, well, then that's the, is for, um, actual act for, we'll see presented.
Now, we have three people on that committee. I think it's good for sure to have two. I think I've only seen two people show up at that committee ever. I think we've had three just in case one can't come.
Yeah, usually it's been three for scheduling purpose.
Right. Cause like we do need two for that one.
Yeah. For the meeting specifically.
Yeah, I think it's in states that you have to have two.
Yeah, okay.
And one thing I noticed was that other boards combining audit with financial or budget, any money thing that they do that. Although I noticed Derek, Box Elder has an increment financing committee.
That means they must do a lot of tax increment financing projects. Or, or they got, or they did a bunch and then they could just have them remove the committee because we, we don't do a ton of those right now. And I know there's some discussion, I met with, uh, a gentleman from the city just, no, not, couldn't have been more than two or three weeks ago. He, uh, the gentleman came and we talked about, one, just getting to know each other and we talked about the other, um, possibly having a couple of, uh, taxing from a projects that they may be sending our way. But I haven't received any detail on it, so.
I think our policy helps with that where we say, this is what we'll do. The city knows that, so it's more selective. They're selective in what they bring to us. That helps, otherwise it's, you know, other districts are just approached with everything.
Well, a lot of other districts are working with multiple cities as well. So since we have to work with one, I think our process will.
Joint educator evaluation committee.
Derek, I mean, um, he told me that it used to be in state law that we had to have this committee. I didn't re, I only saw a couple other boards have this committee. It's kind of dying out, but.
What is it?
Well, this started about nine, 10 years ago. This was at the time that the state was really concerned that there was not a solid amount of evaluations going on throughout the state and districts. And so they laid down the law and said, you've got to have a committee that oversees this. And Jason, what would you add to this discussion?
Yeah, I actually served on it since it started. Back then it was, it was legislated that it should occur. It was in the statute that it would occur. Um, it only has to happen annually. It's a review of the evaluation process. The committee can then decide to meet more if there's work to be done on the actual evaluation. They have changed the statute though, so that it's, it's quite a bit more lax than it was in the past. And in fact, you could read it as not being required like, uh, was mentioned. So I think that, again, I think participation is good because it's good to see what we're doing with our employees to support them in the process of making sure that it's a fair and a process that is meaningful for our employees. But again, I, as far as requirement of multiple or that type of thing, I think that's really, depends on the board as far as what interests you have.
It's a good to have, but I don't think, I don't think it's.
We haven't even met, that's why I've been on this.
Yeah, the actual, it was suspended over the time of COVID. They reinstated it this fall in October. And then because of the reinstatement, they, again, have changed a lot of things. We had scheduled a date, that didn't work out. And so we, we are planning to hold it once again this year just to review our processes. But to, um, I think to everyone's point, it's, it's been something that wasn't as a priority during COVID times. Uh, we, we were given the ability to suspend evaluation completely during those two years. So it's something that is kind of just a Kickstarter again this year to get it back and going.
Plus, most of the districts throughout the state are now in compliance. And that's, that's the big difference.
Policies in place, um, it's not as needed as much.
We'll look into that one.
So until they say you can't have this committee.
But in terms of whether a board member is required on that, we'll find out.
Uh, school district foundation. Right now we have two.
Kind of really only one.
I know you are. Hate to all over that one, so. Um, it, I think it's a good one. I don't think it's a requirement, but I think it's good to show.
PR.
PR, yeah.
Well, and I think it's helpful for us as board members to understand, um, I mean, there's a lot that happens in our district, in our district, um, with the money that either donated to the foundation or the brands that we're able to get. I mean, I would never say that we should not have anybody on that.
I agree. It, how much time is?
It's a monthly meeting.
Monthly meeting?
But you also get recruited to do, to help quite a bit.
They, well, that, that used to be the case. They've worked really hard to bring on more committee members who are very actively involved in doing a lot of the work. So as, as a board member, it's more, um, just to see what's happening and.
More of a supportive role?
supportive, yeah.
Okay. Um, Gina just let me know about inter-agency committee. Uh, she says, I'm not sure if it's required to be a board member to be on there. But she likes serving on that one because it's an interest for her. Let's see.
Is this more of the government relation committee we were talking about before? Or is this something different?
This is like WASAS mental health and corrections and all, and, and United Way and all those things.
So I think again, this is one of those interest ones and I think it's a good thing to show support from the board that we want to do this. And I think one board member is sufficient, so. Uh, next is the kindness committee.
I don't know if I need to be on there, but, I mean, they're on the day of when you have those events, Jennifer should definitely more reach out to us to help with lunch and, because that was definitely needed. But I don't know if I needed the rest of the year, but the day of on event day.
I think this one would, could be more of interest. If there's more than one board member that's interested in being on it, great. The committee started, you know, a few years ago and I was on it as a parent. And then when I became a board member, I wanted to continue on it. So we kind of made it that a board, and I think it's good to have a board member, um, because the kindness has become a huge thing. All of our schools are doing it, it's integrated into who we are as a district now. So I think we should continue that. If Terry wants to stay, great. If not, no problem if anyone else wants to join in.
Can I let me take you off, Terry?
Sure. How, make sure you tell us.
If you need help on the day of, but those are the.
How often do you meet for that?
Once every couple months probably. It's, we don't have like a set time, just kind of when we need to.
Uh, TSSA, okay.
It's like community council light, heavier on the principal, principal has more say. Um, it's just something that has to be approved by the board. I don't know if there's actually a committee. It's sort of, hey.
Is there an actual committee like?
No, I don't know, but Alex, is there an actual committee? I mean, it's just extra money.
What does it stand for?
Uh, teacher and student's success account. It's extra, it's extra money that's distributed, that's supposed to be used specifically at the schools.
For their.
That they get to decide and, and so.
It's built into their school improvement plan.
Yeah. So.
There's a, a board framework that they have to follow and, and stay between the guidelines. So there's a board framework that's adopted. Ours has been, was adopted, I think, two years ago. And so, um, we just re, had re-upped that one because there hasn't been a desire to change it. And so their plans have to follow within those guidelines.
So is that really an actual committee? Do we need that? Do.
No.
Okay, we could probably take that one off.
I think once it hits a threshold of it's being used for people, it almost moves to administrative. I think it's only a board member sort of helps go, no, let's not use that on vending machines. Let's not only use that for weights in the football.
Right.
I think the committee really would only form.
To change the framework.
They're wanting to change the framework, exactly.
Okay, so that's one that we could just hold together if necessary.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, diversity and equity council, Gina currently serves on that. And she said it would be good to have one board member on this committee to show their commitment to this issue. They meet once a month and they put a little bit more time to attend additional meetings, but it's not required in the evenings. Right now it's all over Zoom. So I think it's good to continue this one and show support.
We do have, you know, all those, we do have the various, you know, interest groups that, we have the, the different councils and that's a lot of councils. I, I wonder if we could actually do better. If, if there, if, um, you know, certainly I would want Gina to be the lead. But if we could have more representation on more of those councils, I think would be good. And so I think that's, that's a place that maybe, because they do have a lot of meetings. Um, you know, Brian has a lot of meetings that if we could cover those, it'd be, to, again, to show we're invested in this would be a good thing. So in terms of an area that I think that we could use some additional help.
So if you guys have interest, I think that's a good place to reach out to Gina and ask her where you might be able to.
Might cover.
Yep. So, uh, communications Rebecca.
So that's quarterly, we have Caleb and his, um, group and just more of like a liaison type position to help between the board and the communications department relay ideas and things that are happening and keep them on top of it. I think it's a good, I think it's a good thing to have. I don't know that we need another person or anything. I think that's kind of fine. Anything's good.
Um, right now we also have a few other committees, like the Shoreline Middle School Construction Committee and the Los Act Elementary School Construction Committee. Those meet monthly, um, at the top, for the time being, for about an hour. And how long do we anticipate those going?
Well, it probably has until about, once we get to the point where the plans are ready to go out to bid and get that, and, and, um, we'll start to pay her back. Because once, once we actually have the plans finalized and then we bid, so there's really, yeah.
So they'll time out in a few months.
Okay. Um, and it's good to have, I think, the three members on that. So I'm going to skip the next two and just go to the last one. There's also the insurance committee. And again, that's just, uh, one that we had to throw together. And that can be, um, need, need bigger.
There's a reviewing group, the, there's one meeting tomorrow. I don't know if you know about that one. It's the, they were the, the top finalists from the grading that was done last month. They're coming into the results.
Okay, two, um, committees that came to our attention during the retreat was the political act, a political action committee and also a policy review committee. Do we want to talk about possibly putting people on that right now? Or is that something that we would rather want to think about? Or is this something we want? And then maybe in June when we revisit this, then ask to be on the committee.
So the, I would call it something like government relations or something. Political action makes me think of the groups that are there to get a candidate in office. Is not what we're trying to do.
That also sounds like stuff we're not allowed to be involved in.
Yeah.
That's what, that's why we're having the discussion.
So I don't know, someone has better names, but.
No, that's a better name.
I think that would be good to get started now. We, we've talked a little bit about how we want to be better as a district about communicating with our legislative representatives. And I think now that they're done with their PD session, now is the time to work harder on those relationships.
Is there an actual committee in our district already that exists? Is this going to be a district thing or is this just going to be like a board member assignment? Like we want you to make sure you talk to the legislators or keep us informed or whatever.
Probably just an assignment. I don't know if we need a full committee about that.
See this as board members and maybe Derek, because Derek positions as a lot with legislation.
Don't leave the city out of that. City and county all of it, I mean.
Does it, does it, does it, it makes sense in my head that Jennifer's already doing this in a way.
I just like more than need them.
Okay.
Do that.
I got time.
Okay.
You're already writing them all the time anyways.
Yes, I am.
So. Work right, maybe amper your style.
And again, just remember when you guys do reach out to them, you're reaching out to them as a single board member. So make sure, if you're saying something, if it's opinion based, make sure you're stating, this is my opinion. Or ask them a question, you could say, as a board member, I have a question of such and such and such. To make sure that you're not speaking on behalf of the board.
Uh, one thing I'm thinking we could do is invite them to our school, um, inside that we could coordinate with.
This would be a good one too for the commit, you two to reach out when we have the state legislatures and we had that meeting with them in the fall to do that again. That would be a good one for you to reach out to them.
Yeah, that was great.
One thing I know, some other boards also had a chamber of commerce, so that, that can be one added on. Including, including them in that, not just like the city and the state legislatures. Including, including them in that, not just like the city and the state legislators, but the county and the the chamber of commerce and crap. What's his name on the state board?
Randy.
Randy.
Okay. All right. And the last one is the policy review committee. That was something that's been brought up. We do have a lot of policies on the book, and I don't know if this is just one that we want. Maybe we've had a couple of board members. I know Keith has said that he's taking on, like they're taking on the thousand series and the two thousand series this year. And then it would be like every year we pick, he would look at the thousands of the two thousands, maybe with him, and then bring suggestions back to the board.
There are other boards do have policy review. I was surprised that even some of the really small boards also had a policy review committee.
So is there anyone that would prefer to be on that right now? You'll have to think about it right now. We can also come back to it.
People are always lining up to talk about policy.
So anyway, think about that one and we'll come back to that later. So, okay.
I don't think it'd be bad in the handbook, just to put all the committees, like Terry's list, just so people we decide, we decide, oh, we need a tool to deal with this thing. What are possibilities that we could use?
I like it.
Because right now we don't need a lot of these, but we'll make it future.
Okay. Again, if you're ever feeling that a committee assignment is too overwhelming or it's too much time, please reach out to me or Rebecca, and we're happy to make adjustments where necessary. I appreciate everybody's time and commitment for the things that they do do. I know it's a lot of extra time, but it doesn't go unnoticed in the district as well. So I appreciate it.
I just want to say like, yes, it can be a lot of time. I think it's helpful because it helps us see better how can we make decisions on things in the district that we're not more involved in some of the things? To know what's going on, what the needs are.
And this is a good place for us as we give our board member reports to talk about those committees and those things that we're seeing out in the district as well. So, okay. Final NSBA preparation.
I read this yesterday afternoon.
I was going to actually talk about it. So each of you should have received an email saying that you needed to upload your vaccination or get a COVID test prior to going. You should also be able, you should download the app prior to going to NSBA. So you can start looking at what classes you might want to attend as of right now.
I didn't see a schedule of classes.
Just a list. Yeah, just lists, but there is a schedule if you go, I'll show you later on the, on the app after. And then Sunday afternoon, you should have gotten an invitation from USBA. And then you'll also be joining Brian Baker on Sunday evening as well. Is there any other things that you need to talk about?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I'll probably be sending just a text, a test text, whatever. Just because that's one of the ways that we will normally coordinate on anything, like if we want to go to dinner on Saturday night together, that kind of thing. So just watch for that here in the next couple of days. And then just use that when we want to coordinate with one another. You know, if we go into a general session and somebody wants to say, oh, you know, we're sitting about a third of the way back on the right-hand side, if you want to join us there, that kind of thing. And you don't have to. If you want to sit somewhere else, that's fine. We don't have to sit together. We don't have to do dinner together, but it's just an opportunity to coordinate.
Okay, great.
Okay, Derek Marshall is here to help me out with this. This is a big day. This is a big day. We closed today on the, on the Los Act Locust Lane property with BYU. That, that's an interesting coincidence that's happening today. So thank you to McKay for all of his work on this. Derek has been, both Derrick's have been involved in doing the review of this. We're in a good position. We've got a lease back on that. In addition to that, the portion of the city contribution to this deal that was offered by the city, Derek Marshall took the lead on coordinating with his counterpart at the city to talk through the scope. And just, just so that we would not be too, we wouldn't get into trouble with one another later on. Derek, why don't you say a little here? And I have a copy of the revised agreement. It's done by way of markup, so you'll see it on the right-hand margin. Derek's got that, so why don't I send this way? And when we're done with this, you can pitch it, but the changes are noted there. Derek.
Sure. Thank you for having me here. We worked quite a bit on this over the past few months with, with Keith and Mark and Derek, and then recently with Brian Jones over at the city attorney's office. What we have here is, this is after numerous drafts of this agreement. We've gone back and forth on how to best serve the district. And of course, the city wants to be best served by this as well. Some of the difficulties have simply been just the importance of keeping the schedule with construction at Wasatch. The city wants as much of the dirt as they can get, and we're happy to give that to them because they're going to do that, that work themselves. However, they don't have the capability of doing all of it on the schedule we like. And so what we've done is, is this agreement where we don't think they're fully going to utilize the million dollars of services on the Wasatch properties. We've built in kind of a general, over the next 10 years, they will provide in-kind services up to a million dollars with a part of that, hopefully a good chunk of that coming on the Wasatch property is the idea. They are ready to, the city is ready to start excavation, rough excavation tomorrow on the site, start moving some, some dirt and then pulling it off, then taking the fill to their site. And so one of the most recent concerns is making sure the city understands that they will not get everything from that site because of the schedule. And so I actually, this was sent over, some last minute changes were sent over to the city yesterday. Brian Jones has not quite yet got back to the final blessing, so it's still technically a draft. But I anticipate any minute now receiving Brian, an email from Brian Jones saying they, they approve these changes. So that's where we're at with the city. They have been, they have been good to work with. Any questions about the draft?
Why does the city want so much dirt?
For the Southwest project, I believe.
Oh, the soccer field.
It has a swamp laying down there.
And even, and even the, the other park up here, I think just didn't last, did it, and everything else?
When you say that they will give us in-kind over the next 10 years, like what types of things would they give us?
Yeah, so that has to be mutually agreed upon by both the city and the district. Some ideas that have been floated besides this project would be, I think sometimes they have some sidewalk changes that can be made. For example, what happened, that they could agree to possibly some.
Stormwater drains.
Yeah, stormwater drain systems that need to happen where they expect, they expect the district to participate. That may be where it could come. There's nothing set in stone. It is, that is loose. And it has to be mutually agreed upon, which is not ever ideal, but it's as good as we're going to get at this point, I think.
But I, I also think it's sort of, it's, we've been accused of in the past, this at least introduces a process. Like, we know you're doing this. We'll recognize that you did this. We know that this is an expense that you've had. You know, this is mutually beneficial. It's a, it's a way even for that year, even that 10 years to have a yearly meeting to say, this is how our relationship has actually been of benefit to one or the other. And we can quantify those things that are happening instead of being, hey, you asked us to do this. It didn't come up in the review. We had asked you to do that. So.
So does the city councillor or the mayor need to approve this?
Apparently the mayor.
And we do, I do have on here the mayor's sign. That has not been changed yet. So.
It says that you're going to do, you'll be tracking the cost of how this goes. How, I mean, I'm assuming that's going to involve Derek. How, what if we can't come to an agreement of how much was actually agreed upon about how much was moved or what was moved?
So they've agreed upon the rate in terms of the yardage and how much would the other credit would be given per load? Mark has that number. I don't have it off the top of my head.
It's, it's in the agreement.
Is it?
For, for this project. Future projects have yet to be agreed upon.
But overall, Mark and the Public Works Department of the city have been very mutually cooperative in the past. So I don't anticipate there will be any unresolved disputes of this. We'll be able to resolve things.
Further questions about this?
Not exactly about this, but we got a follow-up email with a picture where they're going to start exporting.
Right.
And Derek, I don't know if you can answer this. I'm just curious. I thought that was the area we need to bring in. Like they're exporting from the area that I thought didn't need as much.
So my guess is, and this is a guess, as I look at it is, because I don't have a chance to talk with Mark about it. But as I look at that, my, my guess is that there's, they're still going to have to grade it to, to make it flat, right? To make it to where the footings, foundations and things like that are all at the proper grade. And so there's, there's still going to be site prep work, pulling off soils there, but you are correct. The, they are going to need to pull soil from the upper areas and bring it to the lower area. So. But at the same time, if we remember back to where the slope of the land is, it slopes down. And then it gets to the point where there's that draw or beam right towards the other side. It goes right back up to the road, and that's one of the reasons why they didn't want to have an exit there on that south side of the property was because you're going uphill and on a blind curve. And so that's my, my guess is it's just trying to flatten that area out to get it ready for, for site prep. But again, that's, I'm just guessing based off of what they're going to have. I talked to Mark there.
Any other further questions?
So we're recommending that you approve this today, and all of us will breathe a little easier as we go. Derek, thank you for all your.
You're welcome.
Trouble in this. Derek built this basically out of thin air. So much appreciated.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
All right. We are at the end of our agenda. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Okay. So we will begin our business meeting at 9:00 AM. So you can take a few minutes of a break here.
Thank you.
So I believe.
Send in the bill.
I do. So we missed that actually for a few months.
No, I haven't done one.
So yeah, this is the best place that I've found.
I believe it's in full form.
It has the actual. So it has the actual like.
Did they send us an email about that?
Yeah, they did.
Send any, any last minute.
Yeah, something like that, just in case they come back with.
Was it from N A?
No, it was from NSBA.
I don't think they will at this point. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Let me see if I can find mine.
I couldn't hear you at all.
Oh, camera's still running.
Is audio?
So I can't say anything immediately, Terry.
So he can't kill you two.
I had to do my pushups.
Oh, yeah, you have to do pushups. You have six minutes.
Six minutes?
Yeah, YouTube gets to watch you.
You only have to do 10.
Where's the camera so I can go out there? I don't want them to see my form.
Yeah, over there.
I'll do it under the table.
Oh, here we go. I forwarded it to myself. Okay.
That, keep going, keep going. Oh, Gina says yes. I can hear all of you.
Hi Gina.
Right here, download the event app. Okay, right there.
Steve.
Steve, yep. Okay.
Cavendish flight to Denny.
I have to move mine. I'm on the 11:00 PM flight. That's the worst.
I'm actually, we're, we're taking Lauren back to Portland. And I'm flying and then I'm going to change bags in the airport.
Oh, wow.
I won't even come home. I'll just leave a different bag in the car.
Genius.
So, and then go to San Diego. Because it turns out, every flight from Portland to San Diego came to Salt Lake first. So I thought I would just, just, you know, fly with my family.
I'll blame you.
We need lunch, work.
Hey, Terry. Tomorrow. I haven't forgotten about that. I haven't, you talked to me about it in a board meeting. It's just that Michelle canceled the meeting. So it's on my list to talk to her about my next meeting.
Oh, yes.
Okay, you remember?
Yes.
I'm trying to, it was family, something. Anyway, I'll talk to you about it.
My hometown is what the initiative is called. My hometown.
Okay.
Yes.
Anyway, so I think I meet with her right after this break.
Okay.
Just wanted you to know.
Yeah, there happened a huge event at Franklin, the 28th or the 20th, it's the end of April. And they're all, I mean, it's just a big community event that's happening.
So Terry mentioned to me this thing that she was contacted by the city about called.
My hometown, yeah.
Which absolutely does.
So I want to coordinate with the mayor a little bit to find out if there are specific needs. I may want you to designate somebody to.
But it's mostly like, the church is trying to do stuff that the school districts are already doing. And so let's not let them double book.
She happened to chance there and not going as a function of the board, but happened to chance that. We aren't at the table, so.
Only pretend from the school district there.
We have a number of different people that can contribute, from a social worker to some large student family advocates. There's a number of people who just talk about resources and so forth.
Sounds good.
David Hollinger from the pulitzer at Franklin, he's kind of the point person at Franklin for it. Because the church is using the chapel across the street for Franklin as their base for the project.
Okay. All right.
Great, Terry. Yeah, just letting you know how I can get involved. Thank you. I found out on two of those committees, my question, the adult that is not needed any longer, as was talked about Nikki's. Does he know what she's talking about, what's he even about? And then I just heard back from Clint that the, the data privacy is not seen. We just put it in place with Kerry to get, get off the ground. It is not requirement, but then they have it met for over two years. So we can eliminate some things as well. The only request that they think you made, and I just confirmed with yours, and somehow there's still a board member that helps or sees her as a school, like I mentioned.
Kind of like, and that's something we can talk about.
Yeah, school assignments is a whole other conversation. Just make sure I'm still on the radar, but I said, you very much are.
All right. Are you ready? Okay. Welcome and good morning. Today is Tuesday, March 29th, 2022. We're convened as the Provo City School District Board of Education. The time is nine o'clock in the morning. We're meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. We'll begin with a roll call. Melanie Hall, Board Pro. Melanie Hall, Board President.
Jennifer Partridge, Board Member.
McKay Jensen, Board Member.
Terry McKay, Board Member.
Nate Bryson, Board Member.
Derek Anderson, Business Administrator.
Keith Retell, Superintendent.
All right. Is there a motion to convene a business meeting?
I know that we can leave it.
We, um.
Gina's attending, but not voting.
So Gina Hales is, um, okay. The first thing, we have one thing to approve this morning, and it's the city agreement, and I'm going to turn some time over to the superintendent to discuss the.
So as part of the land transaction with BYU, the new location, future location for Wasatch Elementary, the city was at the table on that, and I believe it was probably rooted in the notion of having not to move, not need to move their retention base, in which they had built on the south end of the, the Wasatch field. They agreed to contribute $1 million of in-kind services to this transaction. And one of the things that we've worked out in this agreement is essentially the, the scope of what that would look like, it'll be over the next 10 years. But the bulk of it will be initially on this project for moving dirt off of the current site, and the city wants that dirt for other projects, so they'll be moving that. We've worked with the attorney, Derek Marshall, he's worked with his counterpart, Brian Jones at the city, the mayor, the city manager, Lynn Parker, and several of us here at the district have been working on this for quite a few months now, and we are now at the point where we are recommending approval. Let me just say that I, I would recommend that the approval be conditional on if there are any adjustments from the city today that they're deemed to be really minor clarifications, and that's all. If there were anything but that, then we would, we would bring it back to you for future approval if there are substantial changes. So we recommend this for approval.
Okay, is there a motion?
Was there a motion?
Yeah. Is there a motion on this?
I move that we approve the city agreement as discussed in study session. With the condition that it doesn't have an extreme or.
Material.
Material, what a great word, a material condition that changes the nature of the contract.
Okay, a motion made by Board Member Bryson, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Board Member Jensen. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. So thank you for being here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. What a relief.